Good afternoon. At this time, I'd like to call the we administrative workshop on August 19th, 2020. This workshop gives the school committee an opportunity to hear the goals for the school year. So this is a wonderful opportunity. I'd like to thank Mr. Malone, Assistant Superintendent, Mrs. Regan, and certainly our business manager, Mr. Dave Libby, and all our principals that will be presenting for us here today. So without further ado, I would like to yield the floor to Superintendent Malone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we're going to present our PowerPoint slide presentation. Just give us a moment, Mr. Chairman. We're just trying to bring up the PowerPoint presentation. There it is. Great, thank you. Thank you to the school committee for being in attendance today, and thank you for all those watching. This is our annual presentation of year-end summary and school improvement plans for the upcoming school year. This is a tradition that we've had in Tuxbury, certainly since I've been here. It's a great opportunity for the district leadership team to collaborate throughout the day, to review plans and to present to the school committee each year annually. It's great to have others watching as well. Certainly, this school year coming up for the 2020-2021 school year will be a challenge, and it will certainly be different than any other school year we've seen. But we'd certainly want to recognize some of the accomplishments that we had in the 2019-2020 school year, regardless of the fact that we had to move to remote learning statewide in March. We do think that we've had significant accomplishments and made some great progress. And just you'll be seeing presentations from multiple people in the district leadership team throughout this presentation, and certainly we welcome questions and comments from the school committee when we're done with the presentation. From the 2019-2020 focus areas under the superintendent's goals, we were certainly moving forward last year with initiating a transition from community services to Alphabet. Certainly, the elementary school building committee was moving into design phase, and now, as it is, into construction phase. New positions were used to enhance instruction. We have created significant security enhancements throughout the district, and we continue to comprehensively plan for our capital and maintenance section. And as you see, we have checked each one of those topics in regards to the specific progress. Still ongoing is the ESBC design phase and construction phase of the new elementary school building project, which if you've had the opportunity to drive by the Ryan School and the Center School, you can see that project under construction, and there's been great progress made towards that. Our capital plan continues to move forward as we continue to improve all buildings and systems, and Mr. Libby will talk a little bit more directly about that as we move on. And certainly, new positions to enhance instruction specifically around technology integration and STEM, and the security enhancements that we've certainly really tackled over the past year to include new vestibules at the Trahan Elementary School, the Ryan Elementary School, and the Wynn Middle School. So we've had a significant amount of resources and efforts put into enhancing all these areas, and as you can see, we are making either significant progress or still ongoing progress to all those elements from our 2019-2020 focus areas. And just to review the superintendent goals, the professional practice goal from last year, the superintendent will show both elementary school building project design and initial construction phases reflect the district strategy and promote positive outcomes for students. And certainly, as I briefly discussed, the elementary school building project, which again will pull in all students from across the town from grades two, three, and four into one building, and also have one elementary complex between the Ryan School and the new school, certainly, we believe, will have significant positive impact for students. Under the student learning goal specific to the superintendent, we initiated this year the PLC process, the Professional Learning Community, which gives opportunities for staff members to meet regularly as professionals in conjunction with the administration to talk over teaching strategies, curriculum, grouping of students, progress of students, and this allows our professional teachers to have that level of collaboration every day. We've had great success with that. We have a cadre of PLC facilitators, which are trained individuals within the district that lead these opportunities, and we're very proud of the success we've maintained with that in 2019 and 2020. Just a reminder on our district strategy, which we have maintained from last year, the Tuxbury Public Schools community believes that our educational program will encompass a 21st century teaching and learning approach that promotes consistent growth among our students, staff, to achieve academic, social, and emotional success for all students. And our theory of action that we introduced last year, which is if Tuxbury Public Schools prioritizes a growth mindset amongst all stakeholders while providing quality professional development and a professional culture grounded in collaboration, then all students will experience innovative, student-centered instruction for prioritizing and positive outcomes. And for this year, our structure is going to look a little bit different. Typically, I would present the superintendent's goals, which would be reflective of the overall district goals. What we are going to focus on across all grade levels and across all disciplines is the safe return to school for staff and students during the challenging, during these challenging times, while providing enhanced opportunities for academic success for all students. We think the current pandemic situation has had a significant impact on education and has caused us to think differently about our roles and about how we provide education, and will continue to think that way throughout the year to make sure we are providing the best educational opportunities for students. Specifically, some of the things that we'll be looking at under the superintendent's goal will be continued work with Alphabet, particularly in these trying times when childcare is an issue as we open up in a hybrid model. Alphabet has committed to continue on with before-school programming and is very actively looking, along with the, in conjunction with the town manager, for open spaces in Tuxbury to provide not only after-school care, but for entire days' worth of childcare for students who are either in the remote phase of the hybrid learning model on a given day or are in part, as part of the remote learning academy. They have looked at several locations and several businesses. They have been very motivated to contract and set that opportunity forward so that they can message out to students and begin to recruit staff. However, nothing is finalized yet, but we know that they're working hard in that direction, and as soon as we have a resolution to that, we will certainly message out to parents. In addition to that, we continue on with our community services preschool that even our opening plan, which predominantly covers our K through 12 educational system, our community services preschool will also open up in a hybrid model, and they'll be providing services similar to our hybrid design, which would be two and a half hours a day for two days a week, certainly to alleviate some of the childcare issues that are out there, but also to provide social activities and education for our younger students. We'll also prioritize safety for all students and staff. We've done some significant work in regards to assessing the HVAC system in all of our seven buildings and ensure that they are prioritizing bringing in fresh air daily. We've continued to look at opportunities to make sure that we have operating windows and exhaust fans to supply fresh air coming in, while we've also looked at cleaning all vents and HVAC units themselves to ensure that they are clean and operating efficiently. We've established the appropriate cleaning protocols for all of our schools. Our custodial staff have done an outstanding job. We've purchased three additional foggers that are designed to spread sanitizing chemicals at a fast rate, along with 10 modified power washer misters that will allow our custodial and maintenance staff to sanitize locations and whole schools in minimal amount of time in preparation for student arrival and for any post-educational activities. We'll continue to work with Kelly Constantino, our lead nurse, and the members of the Tuxbury Town Health Department to ensure we're up to date on all COVID-19 response elements, statistical data, protocols, testing opportunities, and contact tracing. We've got a great partnership with the town right now as far as that goes. As with any situation like this, details and data and information constantly changes, but a big thank you to our public health department at the Town Hall in Tuxbury for their significant support of our endeavor. Currently, what you'll hear today is a lot from building principals and curriculum leads specific to setting cohort assignments for students and scheduling of students, working to set cohort assignments for special education students, particularly high-need students, and begin to develop their specific schedules that will correlate with their needs, collaborating with staff on planning specifics of student experiences at the school level, and will continue to negotiate with the Tuxbury Teachers Association prioritizing for positive outcomes for students. We certainly know that these are challenging times for everyone. We know that the hybrid schedule model does present challenges for parents specific to childcare. Any hybrid model will present that level of challenge. We know that parents have concerns about that. Some questions have come up about why the partial day, the four-hour day in-person of hybrid followed by the afternoon portion of remote. Some of the challenge we can, challenges we continue to look at that have caused us to look at this option, specifically go into the area of food services, how we can provide meals in multiple locations and settings, and what additional staff we would need to hire in order to do that, and the social aspect of students eating six feet apart at all times. We've continued to work at the challenge, look at the challenges of transportation. We have worked closely with Tuxbury Transportation, but we know there will be challenges with the limited number of students that will be able to be on any particular bus run, which will also result in repeat bus runs where students either may be arriving to school at a later time or need to be staying later at school at a later time. And we were concerned, one, on the impact of students if they're remaining late, particularly our younger elementary students, and at what hour we would be able to get them home with some of those transportation challenges, and worrying about the additional costs that we would need to divert from the budget if we were to bring on additional transportation assets to support that. We're also in the process of managing multiple staff leave requests specific to the COVID-19 pandemic. When we add those numbers to our traditional absentee rate or leave rate, we are concerned about the staffing levels available on any given day that would be able to support a full day of in-person instruction. We will actively be seeking out substitutes and other support staff to help us with this as we continue to negotiate with the Tuxbury Teachers Association around their specific ideas of the hybrid model. But those will be challenges that certainly, right now, we have not been able to overcome, and we do feel that the partial day in-person of four hours of instruction followed by the remainder of the day in the hybrid model in a remote setting is more attainable, along with setting high expectations. And again, we're working very closely with the Tuxbury Teachers Association to make sure that all of our expectations align, and we can follow through with the ideas that we put forth on our opening plan specific to the remote learning portion of the hybrid model and the remote learning academy. So I do think you'll hear a lot more details and a lot more connection to the opening of a school in, as opposed to a traditional set, goal-setting opportunity, which this meeting has typically surrounded. So we ask that you please consider, man, the details we're putting forward, and certainly we are open to all questions at the end of the presentation. With that, I will turn it over to Ms. Regan.
Thank you, Superintendent Malone. Let me move to the next slide. Sometimes, there we go. All right. I just want to take you back a minute to how excited and where we were last summer before we, before the pandemic hit and when we were really looking forward to a successful 19-20 school year. So I'm not going to read through this, but if you remember, our number-one goal in teaching and learning was greater understanding, deeper thinking, more than recall regurgitation, and involving our students in authentic learning, certainly improved technology infusion. So what were some of the goals that we had laid out for you to do that, and where were our big successes? If you remember, we were in year two of a three-year curriculum mapping project. I would say now, we're in year 2.5. We have had some great progress. If you remember at the beginning in Superintendent Malone's slides, a green check is significant progress, a yellow check is some progress, and a red check would be not yet. So you can see that our progress with our UBD consultant was extensive. We're very proud of the work our group has done. We've also worked with Rebus Associates in calibrating our administrative evaluation and effective supervision skills. We also were at the time, all throughout the school year, were working with the TTA and our TPS administrative team, working on revamping and updating our educator evaluating, evaluator system. We still have some work to do there. We did make significant progress, but again, our time was cut short, and will revisit that project when we come back to school. So why do the work? We realized, as the pandemic hit and we hit March, that having that work complete really would have benefited our consistency in curriculum planning and lesson planning for all of our students. So that goal is still very significant to the district, and we'll continue working on our curriculum mapping and now with an enhanced remote learning plan as well. So if we look at our student learning goal, Superintendent Malone has also already talked about the success our PLC facilitators or our teacher leaders have had. I would say the one area that was cut short for us that we need to continue to professionally develop our teacher leaders is in data analysis protocols to plan for that instruction. The, in the curriculum world, these things go hand in hand. With teaching and learning comes assessment, and we need to know if our students are achieving where they need to be. So we'll continue with that work, and Otis is the tool that we will use to do that digitally district-wide. That is part of Director of STEM, Jason Stamps' presentation, so I won't get into that too much, but what we learn is efficient digital assessment tools are critical if we're going to have any kind of success with remote learning or even in-person learning. So now, when we look at our district improvement goals, Karen Baker O'Brien on-boarded last year as a Director of Student and Family Support. She's had great success. She's going to showcase some of that to you in just a little bit. We have not yet brought on a Director of Literacy, and we have put that position on pause as we look to reopen this school year and make sure we're protecting our budget for our staffing needs as we reopen. And we, Administrator Assistant to the Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent's Office, Maria Cutlass, and I would also add Gail Johnson, have just been pivotal in helping us. They're the names that our parents and people see when our district emails go out, and we really appreciate their work for us. All right, so improved STEM programming. Again, Jason will talk a little bit more about that, but this is an area of great success for the district. We had some great progress, I would say, in aligning our new history and social studies and civic engagement needs. We still have work to do here. Again, with the school year cutting short, we did not see through the beginning of that civic project, but that's still a mandate of the state, and we're working towards that. We will enter into the second phase of the tiered focus monitoring this year with a greater emphasis on civil rights. So this is just an illustration of the many, the three big rocks, as we call it, are our three big goals, and some of those focus areas and professional development areas that we were focused on last year, and I will say, to be continued. These goals aren't going away. We will maintain them, and we will work to strive that we make significant progress in all of those areas. So let's talk a little bit about that, our planning for reopening. So as Superintendent Malone showed you in his, in his goal, is we have one goal right now, and that's to plan for and develop a safe reopening for our students and staff towards academic achievement. So what have we been doing this summer? We've had about 100 teachers working over 1,400 hours on that curriculum mapping with another, with that focus on the learning plan towards remote learning lessons to accompany in-person lessons. We've had summer remote learning PD. Approximately 90 of our teachers are currently in a PD for remote learning skills and tools, and that's a 10-hour training for each teacher. For opening day one and two, that's August 26th on Wednesday and August 27th on Thursday, our staff will be at their homeschool this year, a little bit different than the entire staff coming to that high school. The focus of these two days will be the health and safety protocols district-wide, new Title IX updates, special education review, building-specific logistics for health and safety restrictions, time with the school nurse, reviewing the reopening plan, and then some of those very much-needed fire drill and emergency planning at each of our schools. For the 10 days, so you, you know, I've talked about in prior school committee meetings, we have 10 extra days, 10 of our 180 school days, to train staff and to communicate with students and families for the reopening. Those days start on Monday, August 31st, and roll through Tuesday, September 14th. You'll see later in the school committee meeting our revised school year 2021 school calendar, and that outlines those days and the days off that we have around the Labor Day holiday. Those days will be focused on self-care. So if you, you know, use the analogy of the oxygen mask, how do we help our teachers take care of themselves before they're taking care of our students? There'll be social, emotional learning, professional development, and trauma-responsive training. They'll be accompanying lessons to use with students. There'll be significant amount of time spent on remote learning tools and strategies as remote learning is a portion of our hybrid model, and at any given time may be a model that we need to use with all of our students. We will provide time for equity, anti-racism, and curriculum bias tools that we have in the district, and how to use them for the classroom, for students and families as they need. And then there'll be time to reach out to students and families before reopening so teachers can assist them in the strategies they're going to need to be part hybrid, part in the hybrid plan, part in-person and part remote. And then there's many new resources that we're providing, not only to our staff, but to our students as they need, so that they can have a successful school year in this hybrid model, or at least at the beginning of the year. I'm not sure where we'll end as we go, but some of those new tools, and Jason will talk a little bit more about these as he comes on, but we're going to offer both platforms, Google Meet and Zoom, as we learned over the summer school process that these, having both of them available to teachers was really beneficial in meeting the needs of large groups and small breakout groups. There'll be new devices, many of them, for staff and students if they need to borrow for enhanced remote learning portion of the curriculum, but also enhanced connectivity at our schools. All of our administrators attended the Learners First Summit. It's virtual PD platform we have for the school year that focuses on the reopening of school, social-emotional learning, and one of the popular titles, COVID or Not Here We Come, how do we come back after being home from this pandemic? We, I'm just going to highlight a couple of the others. We did purchase Lexakit translation service for our all-student family needs. As we know, there was some translation barriers in remote learning for those families, and have expanded our Naviance program for our social-emotional learning at the Ryan. Grades K through five will have expanded Tang Math for enhanced digital math instruction, and as I already talked about, Otis is a digital assessment tool. And on, during those 10 days, our teachers will view those curriculum mapping updates their colleagues have worked on over the summer. Jason?
Sorry, I was on mute. Thank you, Brenda. Mr. Sullivan, members of the school committee, thanks for having us this evening. So I, Brenda, you can advance the slide. Last school year, to me, was sort of broken up into pre-COVID and COVID. So pre-COVID, we were, we were moving right along. We were, we were hitting our marks. We, our staff had finished, pretty much finished the training for UBD process. Everybody has a really good understanding of the process and, and how to develop units in a thoughtful way. Our science, we were pretty much done, the science overviews were done. They were really getting going on working on the stage two, which is the assessment piece, and really fine-tuning the assessments for the units. The big thing, and Brenda mentioned it a few times, is we really had the ball rolling with this new assessment tool called Otis. We had a group of, we had all the people that teach math in the district, so it was the K-4 people and then, K, yeah, K-4 people, and then five to eight, five to high school, actually, any of the math teachers. The goal was to have an assessment that was built for the benchmark and then assessed using the tool to see if the tool would be a good resource to use and an effective tool to measure students' progress against the standards. We administered one benchmark, and the feedback was, was very, very positive from all the staff. It was a much easier tool than we've used in the past, and the next step of that process with Otis was to get all the staff trained, and unfortunately, the training was to occur on the Friday after we closed school on the, Thursday was our last day of school. The training was about to happen on that Friday, and we never returned due to COVID. So, but that's okay, because there, you know, we have that training rescheduled for this year, and obviously, we had to shift. Brenda, next slide, please. So in February, now, there's some kudos to Mr. Malone. In February, early February, when COVID was sort of still overseas, Mr. Malone came to me and said, "You need to start thinking about remote learning. You need to start thinking about if students and staff need to go home, what, how are we going to, how are we going to do that as a district?" And from the moment he said that, every decision I had to make, I had, I had that in the back of my head. So that sort of has propelled us to here in all decisions we made within IT with things, resources that we had to purchase, every decision that we were making on purchasing for resources and that, I always had in the back of my head, will this work if we're in a remote model, which happened quicker than, than we had expected. will this work if we're in a remote model, which happened quicker than, than we had expected. But as you can see from this slide, we started purchasing Chromebooks almost immediately to prepare, to prepare for that. We've been updating our internet connections at the larger schools. So at the high school now, we're going to have two, every, every school has a 1 gig connection, which is the most you can have in a building. At the high school, we're, we're having a second connection installed. I think it's early next week or later this week for the increased bandwidth. And then we're looking at the possibility of doing that at the win as well. We're still looking at the math and deciding if that's needed or not. Professional development, immediately started talking to the tech integration coaches and what would professional development look like for our staff to support remote learning. They've created an amazing program that Brenda mentioned, that 90 of our staff have, have taken advantage of. And the feedback that I'm getting from staff and from people involved is, is amazing and they're learning a ton and it's fantastic. We've also had to purchase, obviously, the resources, like, like Mrs. Regan said, Zoom, Google Enterprise, both have their pluses and minuses. So we, it was hard to make a decision as to which one fit the needs because one would fit certain needs and one fits another. So we, we moved forward with purchasing both for the year to get us through this year. Little things like microphones and web cameras go out of stock fast. So we've been ordering those, we try to order in bulk, but it's, you know, we get 10 here, we get 10 there, we'll, we'll take them. So we've been ordering those, you know, since early summer and they've been coming in in dribs and drops, but we're, we're confident we're going to have enough to get, to get going for the school year. As far as curriculum, we have purchased a new math program that's going to be fantastic for our K-5 kids that whether we're in hybrid, we're full in school or we're remote, it's a fantastic program. It's going to help our staff, it's going to help our kids, and we're really excited about it. And we've also looking at kits, when the kids are in school, they can't share any materials. So we're looking at kits and purchasing kits for every student so that there's no need to share and they can take those home with them. And then obviously, this year coming, we're going to continue with Otis. All of our staff will be trained, first couple of weeks of school they're going to be trained and there's going to be ongoing trainings throughout the year. The math coaches have been trained, so they're continuous support for our staff. The curriculum units, it's, that work is never done. We're going to keep on, keeping on with those. Keep, as, as the year goes on, we're going to find that there are the resources that we're going to need for remote learning and, and we're ready for that as well. And so the work is continuing. I don't want to take up too much more time. But with this, with that, I'll, I'll pass it on to Mrs. O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. Stamps. Last year in August, we established the Office of Student and Family Support. One of our primary goals was to centralize registration for the entire district. With the help of Mr. Stamps, we were able to not only centralize all the registrations, but develop a system in which whenever a student initiates the process of a registration, that a notice automatically goes out to the principals, Mr. Pelletier, the spread director, our ELL staff, our secretaries. Alerts are also notified on that document and we also developed a folder with FlowChat. In doing and envisioning the centralized registration, we also wanted to have all the registration documents uploaded into Aspen, which is a very beneficial thing should we not have access to the actual folders that if you are in remote and you need to get information, you would be able to see that accident and illness form or other documentation that would be needed. We also work closely with the town in providing census to families as they came in to enroll, to make sure that we had adequate data for our town as we hope to get funding in the future. We established contacts with agencies such as DCF, Hart House, with Regional Director of Community Supports who's located out of the police department. And this, these relationships became imperative as we moved into a COVID world and they became a lifeline to many of the families that were at risk or in need. And so we continue to work with them throughout the summer and planning for the fall. Prior to COVID, we were able to work as a district. Members from the elementary teams, middle school and high school participated in a district-wide attendance committee. This committee's goal was to come up with a universal measures in which we would take the same approach with interventions at certain intervals when students were out of school for any length of time. The tiered intervention system is close to being finalized. Unfortunately, we had to stop that process when we didn't move into remote learning. We also developed Community Resource Guide for our families online so that as we were in the pandemic, they knew with live links to unemployment, where they could go to the food pantry, SNAP benefits, you know, DTA if they were looking for cash benefits. So it's really important that we continue that work as we move into this school year. And the last thing we did last year is united the support team so that we were working as one unit within the school system to provide support to our students and our families and our faculty. Looking at this year, a lot of that work will continue. We are in the process of implementing an Aspen Student Registration Portal, which will eliminate paper and streamline the information that needs to go into our SIMS data report annually. We will also work with senior administration to develop tracking mechanism for homeschool requests and those families who are looking for the Remote Learning Academy. Student and family support was developing an outside website for students and families with a variety of resources, important information that they need to know and links to the actual websites for them to save a step. The internal website will provide internal supports, things like social emotional resources, information on Title IX benefits, 504 and 51As. We will continue to work with at-risk families, which is going to be pivotal as we move into this phase of the school year reopening. We will continue to coordinate meetings with the support staff. We have spent, we had six members of our support staff who worked really hard this summer in developing a very in-depth social emotional resource guide for our teaching staff. It has a variety of resources, it has a variety of information, it has lesson plans, videos for them to watch. So this goal is that the support staff will be able to help facilitate social emotional learning for both students and faculty in an unprecedented school year. And then again, we would like to continue working on the attendance committee, which is going to be essential as we move into this school year. And even in the students in the Remote Learning Academy are in the hybrid model, attendance is going to be essential. So it's important that we, as a district, have that, some policies and procedures in place that uniform throughout the district. And at this point, I will turn it over to Mr. Pelletier, Director of Special Ed.
Good afternoon and thank you for allowing me to present these next moments. I would say, next slide, please, probably go to the other slide, next slide. Next slide. There we go. Our families are of particular importance with this slide. On July 9th, we received this guidance for special ed services opening up in the fall, but also for the summer programming. And from the guidance, really emphasizes strong in-person instruction to the greatest extent possible. And they also urged districts to prioritize in-person instruction for two groups of students in particular. The first group is preschool-aged students and the second group was students with significant and complex needs. We know that our remote learning is very challenging for some of our students, particularly for students who just have difficulty engaging in the remote process due to either their disability-related needs or their communication. Next slide. In response to the guidance, we are looking at the high-age students and we've, we've actually looked at the primary disability and the level of need, which is referenced as the PL3 placement. From that, we gleaned that several of our students, many of our students, do require in-person instruction at least four days per week. And so families will be notified on August 21st, that's Friday, and they will receive a letter by email notifying that their child has been identified for the four days of in-person instruction. Additionally, we are looking at including data from students who we believe, although they do not meet the criteria set forth by the Department of Ed, we believe that some of our students require two to four days of in-person instruction. And so we'll be notifying families, also by letter, email, that their child has been identified for those potential services. And that will, that letter is hopefully going to go out on August 28th and we're hoping that it will go out sooner. All of the services that we provide will depend on staff availability. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. One more slide over. There we go. So we did have extended school year services and we were able to provide in-person learning, hybrid learning and remote learning. We offered those during the August 3rd through the week of August 13th. Next slide. Before we actually got to any in-person instruction, we had to identify faculty who were interested in in-person instruction. Then we need to identify our families who are interested in in-person learning. So we surveyed both the faculty and the staff and we also surveyed families of their interest in participating in in-person services. Initially, many families had expressed interest, but as the couple of weeks went by, many backed down and we ended up with about 27 students for all the programs that participated. We needed to also enhance our classrooms to make sure that they were enhanced, cleaned. And then we also had to collect PPEs, all the supplies, the cleaning products, the disinfectants for each of the classrooms, hand sanitizers. There were many obstacles along the way. We needed to develop processes, protocols and training. Essentially, we created a training manual and that provided a guide for allowing us to train our faculty and also our families. Additionally, we had to identify and train our COVID coordinators. They were in charge of making certain that faculty and staff and students were following and adhering to the protocols set forth by the Center of Disease Control, the CDC, and also the COVID coordinator was identified and located at each of the particular facilities, as well as we need to find a nurse, which we did. Next slide. So the in-person service was tremendously successful, I would say. These included DLC kids, our bridge students, those are students for the social emotional learning, our leap students. We also had individual therapies, particularly for OT and PT. The Doing and Heathbrook Schools hosted classes for the DLC program and we had teachers, special ed teachers, aides and behavior specialists at each site. And many thanks to Mrs. Gerish and Mrs. Tavonovic for their support and willingness to assist us along the way. All of the employees followed the protocols fairly well. Certainly, the mask or the face coverings were consistent and when they needed to use the gowns or the gloves for toileting or other issues, those were implemented with fidelity. Most of the students, and I got to see this firsthand, many of the students came in with, wearing their mask, particularly the very young students, kindergarten and first grade. And I was pretty surprised that some of them were able to maintain the mask-wearing for the two hours that they were in the program. Some of our students, of course, did struggle with the mask and many touched the mask repeatedly. Touching the mask repeatedly for all of us requires us to hand sanitize and/or wash our hands. It's best not to touch the mask as, as least as possible. But overall, the hygiene procedures were followed. Mrs. Regan, you can proceed, the next slide. This is a stock image photo of a bridge program. You can go back one, please. And this was at the Ironstone Farms. That took place on two Mondays, August 3rd and August 10th, three hours each day. When the students practiced social skills, self-awareness, they built their self-confidence and they worked on their social emotional learning through the use of interacting with horses. On the last day, they got to ride the horses, which was a real pleasure and fun to see. Next slide, please. Mr. Galligan, here at the high school, really wanted to get his students out of the home and into the program. So he proposed a field day and that did take place. We had 14 students participate, was fun-filled with activities, including kickball and frisbee. And then they wrapped it up with a lunch. I definitely want to thank the interim building principal, Mr. Bernard. Without reservation, he was tremendously supportive and accommodating each step of the way, as was Mr. Jorin, who was very quick-footed and ensured this field space was available for us and also allowing us the access to the canteen bathroom area. And he also offered equipment. Both, both Mr. Bernard and Mr. Jorin also were present for the students upon arrival and then as they were departing the day. And I know that Mr. Galligan and his staff really appreciate it. Certainly, the thought of the families and the responses that we, and the feedback that we have received have been very positive. Next slide. We were able to conduct telepractice with technology and this was synchronous learning with real-time interaction with the teacher and the students. We primarily used the SLP Assist and iSpire for the face-to-face, but we also utilized TeachTown Basics and the Transition to Adulthood. Our OT and a PT also conducted some face-to-face interaction with the students. You can go to the next slide, please. And if you want to click on to that link, should share some of the survey results. So the survey results were very, very positive. For the iSpire, we had almost 100% satisfaction. There was one student that had some difficulty accessing the program remotely and so the family did provide some really good feedback in the, in the comments section. And that will be useful as we prepare our faculty and our staff to provide some remote learning opportunities as the school year opens and also the hybrid. The other survey was for SLP Assist. We really were curious, because we piloted this program, to see how families would respond and how our students more so would benefit from this particular program. And the survey results were 100% across the board. Families were appreciative of the faculty who were able to demonstrate in real-time instructional practices and addressing the needs of the students. The feedback for that was truly, truly supportive and really solidifies that we are going to continue utilizing this particular software program moving forward. And next, I would present the pre-K and grades four.
Thank you, Mr. Pelletier. This is Terry Gerish, Principal of the Doing School, on behalf of the PK to four elementary team. I'm here with Mrs. Cronin, Mrs. Chinanovich, Mrs. Bosworth and Mr. Harding. What we would like to first do, next slide, please, Mrs. Regan, is to touch base about with the goals that we had set for ourselves for this past school year. You will see that in professional practice, we've linked to what the superintendent called and spoke about with professional learning communities. And we've provided, there were lots of opportunities for our teachers to both learn to both learn how to and then to be able to practice, having conversations together for an hour every week, learning how to, learning how to define what good practice means, finding ways to link instructional practice and student outcomes. And so that our learning, our student learning goal, which is highlighted there in yellow because it's ongoing and we still have some way to go on that. But there, but what we've done is every PLC has developed learning goals for themselves and found ways to look at the delivery of content instruction. So math and reading and writing and, and what does that look like in every classroom? Reading specialists are in and join and special education folks join the PLCs so that they can take that information to figure out how teachers can best deliver quality instruction that meets the needs of every child. And then the school improvement goal continues the work that Mrs. Regan spoke about earlier with our K-12 curriculum mapping project. Mr., Mr. Stamps spoke about the math and the science. We K-4 folks paid mostly attention to the ELA, our English Language Arts, to be able to put reading and writing and foundational skills in play. You'll see that there's a red check there. We've just begun that work and I think we still have some significant work to do on that. But I'm pleased with the, that we were able to figure out the how. And now we're moving forward with the what so that we can then take this work and use it to implement some high-quality instruction as we plan for tools in, in a remote learning environment.
Hi, this is Karen Cronin, Principal at North Street School. And I'm happy to be here on behalf of my colleagues as we talk to you about our goals as we look into this next year. When we sat and thought about what our goals would be for this year, which is such an unusual year, we really thought about the people that we serve. And the people that we serve are students, staff and families. So for our first section for teaching and learning, the goals that we have for our students are really to have them engaged meaningfully with instruction, whatever it looks like, whether it is remote, being accessed remotely, or whether it's live in person. We want to make sure that the kids are actively engaged, working with high-quality content. And we want them to remember that school is fun and we want them to have fun learning and love school, no matter where they are. For our staff, we understand that they're going to need our support so that they can deliver that type of instruction. And they also have a unique challenge in front of them, which is to maintain connections with all of their children wherever they are. So that's something that we want to support them to be able to do it in a positive way. And, you know, we'll be providing professional development for them to be able to deliver that instruction to the kids. Families, we understand that they're in a very unique position as well. So we want to make sure that, first of all, we know what their needs are and then find ways to be able to support them because they really are the bridge. They are the glue that makes this work for any age, but especially we see that with our younger kids. So part of our job is to make sure that our communication is clear and efficient and we're able to respond to their needs quickly and effectively. Next slide, please. I apologize that you're hearing my voice again. I'm speaking for Ms. Chovanovic, who had to leave unexpectedly for a personal matter. But our next element was social and emotional needs. And for students, we know that, you know, something that's so important to them are their relationships, not just with other staff in the building, but their peer relationships. So we want to help to continue to build those relationships for students. Also teaching them skills and strategies so that they can recognize their emotions and their feelings and then begin to learn strategies that help them regulate them so that they're always in a, in a positive mind frame. And when, when they inevitably struggle, they find ways to be able to bring them back to a productive place. We also understand that we need to be looking at trauma-sensitive practices and strategies. And we want to make sure that students are benefiting from those, which then leads to staff. They're going to need some assistance in learning. We're all learning trauma-sensitive instruction and making sure that they have the skills and the tools that they need to be able to do that for their kids. Making sure that they have opportunities to be working with one another and collaborating in the same high-quality ways they always have. And we also recognize that staff are in a unique position as well with their social emotional needs. They're balancing the needs of their own lives, their own personal families, as well as their colleagues and the families that they're serving. So we want to make sure that we are able to support them in whatever they need. And for families, again, making sure that, you know, through our communication, we're able to support them with the community and district resources that we have and making sure that they have a good match for what they need. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Mrs. Cronin. This is Alexis Bosworth. I am the Assistant Principal and Preschool Coordinator at the D'Uring School. I'll talk a little bit about health and safety protocols. So as you, as you know, it's not unusual for us to talk about health and safety. However, we know this year it's that much more important for us to have that as a focus. And for that reason, we've selected this area for our professional development at the beginning of the year to begin within the first day or, within the first day or two. So for our students, the focus will be on having our students receive ongoing age-appropriate instruction, both in person with our teachers as well as through some video training provided by multiple resources in health and safety protocols, such as hand washing, mask wearing, et cetera. And for our younger students, we will help them build some stamina to consistently follow their safety routines and practices such as mask wearing. We know our younger students have a hard time with this, but we also know and particularly know from examples during the summer program that our youngest students can do it. They can wear their masks. They just need, they just need that support. For our staff, we know that we will be providing training for them in how to utilize, follow the safety protocols, as well as how to provide that training at a developmentally appropriate level for our students. There'll be ongoing training opportunities as well as consultation from our medical personnel, such as our, such as our wonderful nurses here in this district. And for our families, we plan to provide you guys with resources and how to follow proper health and safety protocols and begin that training with your, with your children in proper hand washing and mask wearing. We want to support our families as much as possible. We also want to provide communication for any changes in routines ahead of time, such as arrival and dismissal. It will look very different than, than in other years. But we want to make sure that all of our families are prepared for those routines. Next slide, please.
And this is Jay Harding, Principal of the Trey Hand. Happy to be here with my colleagues just to talk a little bit about facilities. We know facility is going to be a large piece of our return. And just to highlight a few of them, arrival and the dismissal. All the buildings, all will be working with changing and reviewing routines for arrivals, for buses, for car pickups. And the same thing with dismissals with the students leaving. We may have to adjust either bus patterns or, or, or drop off and pickup patterns with the parents to make sure that we're safe in both entering and leaving the building. Signage, there'll be multiple signage throughout the building. Everything from reminders of hand washing to arrows for directionality in the hallways, as well as that those dots that sort of will remind that six-foot social distance spacing that will be split, placed strategically around the building. Traffic flow, both inside and out, but specifically inside, will be designed to minimize, you know, both crowds, social distancing, one-way traffic, and just to make sure that everything is safe in the hallways. Transitions, transitions will be planned and designed so we don't crowd the hallways and, and making sure there's a plan in place for those transitions to take place safely, efficiently in our hallways. Nurses spaces, nursing suites, as, as some of us are calling it, will include a, a room, which any student who exhibits any COVID-like symptoms will be designated to go to and having those symptoms addressed. And cleaning, there's in-depth cleaning protocol developed by the district that will be followed throughout all of the buildings and adhered to. Next slide, please.
Hi there, this is Judy McInnis, the Principal of the Ryan School. I am joined by Bill Hart, the Assistant Principal of the Ryan School, and John Ware, Principal of the Wynn Middle School. First, I'd like to say thank you to the K-4 teachers. You've, principals, excuse me, have done some of the work for us. But I'd like to walk through the Ryan School goals. So on the first professional practice one, you'll see that we made tremendous progress towards including the support for PLCs, which will enhance our student achievement, ultimately our daily goal. And we're really pleased with how it went despite the abrupt stoppage in March. There was just a tremendous work done by those teachers and PLC facilitators, as you previously heard. But we can't say enough good about that. It's going to be a game changer for us in the end. We've also been working on building the capacity of our teachers to become school leaders. And we've been doing that through the feedback cycle and really using the philosophy of, you know, empowering teachers to make those decisions with us on behalf of our students. Our last goal in that area was meeting as a principal's PLC for five through 12 grades. And we were successful in meeting that and will continue to do that. The principals met on a regular basis. And at a certain point in the year, we also included the pre-K through four principals for a much larger and clearly a very exciting PLC, as you can probably guess. On the student learning goals, we'll continue with those curriculum units and those will be worked on in the PLCs, as we've mentioned. And again, we're going to continue with working on an inclusive environment at the Ryan School. Something that we really worked with was a cultural celebration committee, a very exciting new addition to our school life. And it's something that we will continue into this school year. We had scheduled the PLCs and will continue to work on doing that. And in fact, you'll see it in the next set of goals. We're going to be working on the school schedule as a master schedule. So we'll also examine when the PLCs happen and how best to enhance our student learning. One of our other goals that we're continuing to work on is paperless learning. March came and many teachers transitioned as quickly as they could. But in some ways, we know paper is necessary, but we would love to save our planet. And that's why you see that. And as of very recently, we're working on the refill stations and modeling that after the TMHS teams and the Wynn team. So we're happy with that. Lastly, you can see we have SEL practices and you'll hear us continue to talk about that. It was important pre-COVID. It seems more critical now than ever. And lastly, we had an adoption of Envision Math, which we're very happy has happened. And we've also done a lot of work with the Otis platform. You'll hear more and more about that as other grades are picking that up as well. So from there, I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Ware for the Wynn School update.
Thank you. This is John Ware, Principal of the Wynn Middle School. Just to go through our goals quickly here. First professional practice goal was to increase time in the classroom and increase level of meaningful and targeted feedback. And we worked together, the third goal there, as a principal PLC to really refine a lot of the training we've had in giving effective and more meaningful feedback to our teachers. So we've made great progress in those areas. Our project-based learning goal, two years ago, we had great success with the students recognizing the plastic water bottle overflow and the recycling needs and getting the water stations installed. That was going to expand next, this past year with other teams on board to experiment and promote the Service Learning Project idea. But unfortunately, that did get halted by the COVID break. Student learning goals are, again, as Ms. McInnis indicated, our PLCs are being supported. We're using those to continue valuing student work, implementation of social emotional learning. We're coordinating, we coordinated heavily with the Social Studies Department last year to pilot the civics project, again, the Service Learning Project. That did not come to fruition, but is an expectation right now for this year. And again, analyzing student performance data with PLCs to develop concrete approaches to improve areas of low performance. A goal we did not meet and that we will still keep in the back of our minds when the time is right, is to be, to create a Makerspace. We do believe that will be a great opportunity and a great space for students to enjoy their creative and intellectual pursuits in a Makerspace room. And then we've continued to expand, expand and implement our restorative justice practices. We're seeing great success with that in teaching students consequences of their actions through a proactive and supportive model. And we successfully adopted a mathematics curriculum, the Envision, and also our new social studies, iCivics program and those resources have helped to bring a whole new viewpoint to our school. And the Otis platform is something we're continuing to develop as well. Now be next slide. Next slide. So our first goal area relates to getting students, staff and families ready for teaching and learning in hybrid and remote settings. Many of the items listed reflect those of the K-4 schools that they discussed as these are universal to making sure that our school community is ready to begin on day one. We'll be sure that students are clear on their class cohorts, team assignments and schedules, that they know how to navigate and understand the buildings, the traffic patterns, the signage that Mr. Harding referred to, those arrows and those blue dots, during times also such as grab-and-go lunch, mask breaks and many logistics that are associated with those. In the opening days, we'll be building confidence in those routines so that our students are comfortable in this environment and ready for learning. Similar to this is building and training students in the technology platforms that will be used in the hybrid and remote learning modules. For teachers, our goals with them have included communicating with them over the summer through email and virtual meets. As Assistant Superintendent Regan has indicated, the PD that we have developed for opening has a focus on health and safety and remote learning. We will be continuously, continuously collaborating with our staff to refine and enhance remote learning opportunities as that's key. Parent communication is definitely an important part of the success of this model. Over the summer, we've met with our school pack and our special education packs to hear their concerns and share some of our planning. Our goal is to ensure that we work closely with them in partnership, ensure that they can access and understand how to support their child's participation and monitor their progress during the remote and in-person modes. Next slide.
We're looking at the social emotional needs of our staff, students and families. And for this, very similar to the K-4, pre-K to four slides, we have the needs of our students and we'll focus primarily on building those relationships peer-to-peer, students with their teachers and always the home and school in general. We'll also be providing instruction in for our ages more explicitly on how to manage all of those things that come with being in a COVID world. We have the same programs, zones of regulation. Additionally, we have second step at the Ryan. And we'll all be looking at trauma-sensitive strategies for the classroom. Again, we'll also look at those counseling and social supports that we need, regardless of what the model is, whether hybrid or remote. For the next, for staff, we're going to continue to work on keeping those very open lines of communication so that we can support our staff in whatever ways they need from us. And that will be a really key point for all of the administrators, no doubt, is that we continue to, you know, gauge what it is that our staff needs so that we best meet their needs. And lastly, we will also be looking at that professional development, which Assistant Superintendent Regan outlined for you earlier in this program. Lastly, for our families, we are going to be continuing to work with them to meet their social and emotional needs the best way we can, which is by being consistent and communicative. And I think that will be something that will go a very long way. And we continue to do that as, as even the summer months are here. And we'll be sharing those resources and those could be from the building or from the community, whatever it is that we think we can help with. For our next slide, we have Bill Hart.
Thank you, it's Bill Hart, Assistant Principal at the Ryan School. And there's no bigger priority for us, the entire district leadership team, than health and safety protocols. Mrs. Bosworth did a, did a really nice job of covering. And for us, really similar goals apply. When we look at students, we're going to teach and continue to teach the practices of a healthy and safe school building and, and personal health and safety. We're going to encourage and help it to build that stamina to consistently follow the practices that we put in place and build that stamina throughout the year so they stick to those, to those plans. We're going to provide a supportive environment with considerations for those students with health issues that arise. And we know those can arise at any moment and be really flexible with our, with our planning and support. For our staff, we will provide an ongoing training and support through our professional development. It's going to address the needs of our students, the needs of our school and of course, the needs of our staff. We're going to look at ways to help teach and encourage hand washing, the proper use of masks, all the components that will go into keeping our schools safe and our students and staff safe. We're going to continue to instruct students on those proper safety protocols. on those proper safety protocols throughout the year. For our families, we'll provide resources to share at home, to again encourage those safety protocols, to help their children prepare and be ready when they come in the school building. We'll continue to communicate regarding any new routines. The K-14 did a really nice job covering logistics, and our 5-8 buildings are also following suit with this. Arrival and dismissal will probably look new, and we will go over those and practice those with our students until they become routine. Signage throughout the building will be new, and will be detailed and help our staff remain safe. We're going to look at new foot traffic patterns throughout the building, including safety drills that we will be practicing throughout the year. We've also updated nursing spaces to meet the needs in this COVID world, and we'll be ready to go on day one. So now we're going to send it over to TMHS with the next slide.
Do you want to introduce? Oh, I'm on. Hi, this is Dr. Osborne. I am here in the conference room with all of these guys around here. You will see us all pretty soon. I'm going to start off with just highlighting a few of the things that we did in the 1920 school year. First of all, we want to talk about, even though school year was quickly stopped in March, we were able to successfully create an in-person graduation ceremony as well as virtual scholarship nights and athletic award ceremonies. And we had students take sealed by literacy exams, six recipients for our by literacy achievement award, five recipients for our state seal award, and three recipients for state seal with distinction award. And even though the AP testing was very different than in years past, we still had 77% of our students earn a score of three or above in 339 tests that were taken. In our two new courses, I just want to highlight a couple of things. We had two new exams that we gave last year, two new courses, English language and the average score in that class, in which there were two sections of that, 3.47. And in our new computer science principles course, was a 3.5 average for the students that took that test. And I also want to note that in microeconomics and in physics, the score from last year to this year increased by over 25% in those two courses. So those are the things that we're most proud of. Innovation pathways, we're working with Karen Baker O'Brien and our guidance department. We had 15 students enrolled in the 1920 school year. Unfortunately, due to COVID, they weren't able to go out and do an internship. But we're looking at ways in order to continue to move that forward this year.
As far as our challenge day this year, we were able to run that in October. Again, getting a lot of feedback throughout the year, both from students and staff, at the profound impact in that program has for the culture in our building. So we will be looking to continue that. We did good work this year in cultural competency and the climate of inclusion. We did a book study that our staff here, we would take some meeting time and discuss it. And some of those conversations would revolve around topics like white privilege, and they were robust and healthy. And I think it was good work to be started last year. We we are going to continue with that model of book study. And this year, we've picked Lead Beyond Your Title by Nellie Bartley. And so we will continue to use that model to sort of expand the capacity in the building for leadership. This year, we hosted the first-ever Project Equity Conference. We had participation from nine other schools in the NBC, and a total of 100 students were in attendance. What was most impressive about this was our student body stepped up, and they're pretty passionate about this being a student-led conference. So the adults and the teachers really were able to sort of play a role of guiding them and coaching them. But they really put the nuts and bolts together on that, and we would love to continue that tradition moving forward. As far as increasing and enhancing the utilization of the makerspace, we have done that across multiple departments. I don't think we've quite gotten to all departments yet, but from time to time, Mr. Zimmerman, who took the lead on that, would have English, history, math classes all in there doing a variety of projects, and that'll continue to be a great resource. We have done and continue to work, the PLC groups have been really digging in, doing great work on a variety of topics, and including curriculum design as well as UBD. They have been able to demonstrate leadership beyond their traditional roles through this PLC, and the results coming out that are very good. Next slide, please. So here we have some of our goals from years past, last year. And I'm going to highlight a couple of the ones you see in green. First, in the professional practice goal. I know that the other 5 through, the 5-8 spoke about the PLC. And I know Principal Vogel found it a great resource to be attending that. And myself and Dr. Osborne, along with the other assistant principals at that level, found that to be very enriching time. We worked on a variety of things. Mostly, what came out of the assistant principals ones is that we were able to collaborate and provide more consistency around some of the things that we were making decisions on. The, as far as building the capacity of the school-based leadership team, we have worked very closely last year, and quite honestly, through the summer and the beginning of this year with our lead teachers and department heads. They have demonstrated very thoroughly that they're a big part of the backbone of the leadership here at Tewksbury Memorial High School. And we couldn't be doing all of the great things that we do here without them. I think we will continue to lean on them moving forward through this year and reap the benefits of the work that we have done in the last year or two.
And as far as professional practice goals that we're still working on, I know some of the other great bands, as well as Mr. Stamp. We talked about how we're going to continue to utilize technology resources provided by the district and use the coaches and the specialists that we have, as well as to strengthen the feedback in the supervision cycle. We began that work, but due to the COVID and us basically not being here since March, we're continuing to work on that this year. Student learning goals, these are all things that we're continuing to work on this year. Mr. Stamp talked about the curriculum apps and units in the math department, PLCs, the makerspace we just talked about, as well as to continue to encourage authentic learning opportunities, whether that's by way of our senior project, by way of the innovations pathway. So those are all things that we're going to continue to work on this year.
For our school improvement goal, we have continued to focus on sustainable resources. We have largely gone in a direction utilizing the Google Suite as far as paperless goes. We have worked on initiatives that cut down plastic waste as far as refilling water bottles, composting, recycling. We continue to utilize two gardens that we grow some of our own vegetables with the Life Skills and Ms. Gordon's project. So we continue to push that initiative forward. That is something that not only the leadership, the staff, but the student body is passionate about. We continue to focus on climate and culture with the goal being an inclusive, supportive nature. And we do that through a multifaceted approach, utilizing things like challenge days, I previously mentioned, mindfulness, teaching practices, restorative justice. We were able to add our project adventure last year. So those are two things as far as the school improvement plan goes that we've made significant progress on this year.
And as you've heard in some of the other people that have spoken this evening, we're working still with the new mathematics curriculum in Visions and Otis. And we've done some work, we've begun to work on the Latin curriculum and making it more accessible to students. We're continuing to work on that in our word language department. Next slide, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank you and the other members of the school committee for having us this afternoon. And I'm sorry I've not had an opportunity to meet all of you in person. John Bernadette, the new interim principal. Mr. Sullivan, I do thank you for coming down to the school and meeting with me on my official first day in the office on July 1st. And again, I hope to meet other members of the committee very soon. I spoke in my interview back a few weeks ago when I was interviewing for the position of interim principal about the value of entry planning. And I'm pleased to tell all of you that over the last seven weeks since I've been officially on the job, I've been able to meet with a number of people that have been very, very helpful in helping me to acclimate to my new role. Many people have taken advantage of an invitation that I extended to them from students to staff to parent groups. And I'd like to just take a moment to inform you of some of those meetings that have taken place and one or two that are scheduled to take place very soon. First, with regard to the students, I've met with the class offices and their faculty advisors for the three upper classes, the class of 2021, class of 2022, and the class of 2023. I also recently met with the offices of the National Honor Society and their advisor. And tomorrow, I have about 35 either students or staff coming together for a combination in-person virtual meeting that will include the folks that I just mentioned, as well as members of our student council and peer leaders to begin planning for an orientation program for our incoming freshman class. In addition, prior to coming on the job officially back in June, I had two full days meeting with Mrs. Vogel before she left to assume her new position as superintendent in Limfield. Those two days were extremely helpful in getting a lay of the land, so to speak, and some of the larger goals that were in place for the coming school year from the perspective of Mrs. Vogel. I can't say enough about Dr. Osborne, Mr. O'Leary, and Mr. Drewin. They have been hugely helpful to me. Their commitment to answering my many questions and really just assisting me in all of the many things that need to take place in the summer, in really a challenging summer to open for the new school year, has been very instrumental, and I'm very appreciative of their work. I've had a number of virtual and in-person meetings with staff, including a school-wide faculty meeting that was virtual. I've had individual in-person meetings with each of the department heads and lead teachers at the high school, as well as Mr. Pelletier, the director of special education, our lead nurse Kelly Costantino, the director of facilities, John Marshon, the food services director, the school resource offices, and a number of club advisors and coaches at the high school. As far as families, I held a meeting with the parent advisory council offices. We had a very good and productive meeting. In fact, I think you have on your agenda for later tonight an approval of a fundraiser that they're hoping to host later this month, as well as, along with Mr. Ware and Ms. McGinnis, we hosted a meeting with the special education parent advisory council here one morning earlier this month. And I've also tried to do some work with some outreach to the community. I believe I've sent three email blasts that included a pretty comprehensive letter from me about work that was taking place this summer to keep parents informed. And as well, we've established a new Twitter account for me as the high school principal. So I think the value of the entry planning will speak for itself in the coming weeks and months as we kick off the new school year. But having met with so many people over the last seven weeks has been very valuable to me and has made me feel extremely comfortable in my new role. Brenda, the next slide, please. So as we prepare for the opening of school, again, this is not something that's happening in isolation. A number of people have come together across the district to assist us at the high school as we think about preparing our students for the new protocols that we will have in place for them with regard to health and safety, and some of which you've heard in great detail from the other principals regarding handwashing, overall hygiene, traffic in our hallways, the protocols for wearing masks, how students will access the restrooms here at the school, the nurses' office, and what we're terming here as the waiting room for any students who may be concerned for their health regarding the coronavirus. From a philosophical standpoint, it will be my goal to advocate for a partnership with the student body and the staff here at the school. As I've often told students, whether it was as a high school principal or as a superintendent in my past work, we are all in this together, no matter the good or the bad, and that our work together will have huge benefits for all of us. And so that responsibility that we place on people becomes increasingly important, particularly among the student body where there are so many of them. As far as staff, health and safety trainings, again, our concern for the welfare of our staff will be paramount. Last week, with the assistance of Mr. O'Leary and Dr. Osborne, we created a document that allowed staff at the high school to weigh in on what they thought would be important professional development offerings for them in the next couple of weeks leading up to the arrival of students on C-16 September 16th. And I'm very grateful for the detailed responses that we received from the teachers at the high school with regard to their needs for professional development. And similarly, we asked them what they felt they needed in order to have a robust remote learning model. And Mr. Stamp has been very helpful in accommodating the number of requests that have come in for technology and that will allow our teachers to do their best work in a remote learning model. And again, as far as the families go, it has been and it will continue to be my goal of communicating very detailed and regular information out to families about what is going on at the high school. I'm a big believer in clarity and its ability to relieve people of anxiety by knowing what in fact is going on. And I will plan to continue to do that, as well as to make available resources for them that will help them with their children as they educate them remotely at home. And then lastly, the reason why we're all in schools is about the students. And, Brenda, if you could pull up the next slide, please. The student experience here is obviously paramount. And we will work and we will continue to work with forging strong educator-student relationships through our advisory block, through student participation in clubs and athletics, and just being very available and accessible to the students throughout each and every day. I talked to you a moment ago about the orientation for the class of 2024. It's very important to me, as it is to a lot of other people, and we create a program that will be designed to welcome our incoming freshman students to the high school. And certainly, that meeting tomorrow is going to be critical with upperclassmen students and staff at the high school in planning for that orientation. We will do our best to create a robust remote teaching and learning model balanced with the in-person model that will make up the hybrid. Health and safety will become critical. The resiliency piece, I'm a big believer in providing students and staff with kind of a response to challenges that would be in place for them and helping them to be resilient and accept those challenges and learn from them so that we are all comfortable in the school. And that certainly will be a high priority for us. Working together through collaborative efforts and promoting a positive culture and climate will remain very, very important as we work with our students and staff. As far as families, communication will be essential, engaging them, seeking their input. A number of emails have come to me from parents based on the communications that I sent out. I welcome those, and I think it's been helpful and helping to give parents a voice. We will continue to share resources that we think will be important for parents to have, looking to them to partner with us. We are in this together, and the parent piece is going to be hugely important. And I will commit to you all and to anybody who's listening that the administration will remain very accessible to families throughout the school. With that, I'm happy to turn the program over for a presentation on high school athletics by Mr. Drewin. Thank you.
Thank you. As you can see, you know, we had 778 roster spots. It's funny because our enrollment at the high school is trending towards, you know, a little bit of a trickle-down, but our participation numbers have crawled up. In my six years as athletic director, our highest number of participation has been about 41% of our student body. And as you can see during the fall and the winter, heading towards the spring, we were probably going to break that. So we had about 600 contests at the MI level, 65 state tournament, and to win the tournament events, we did a good job of educating our kids. We took them to the Sportsmanship Summit at Gillette Stadium, and we have a full load of kids in our captain's council. Next slide, please. We have a pretty successful athletic program here at the high school I'm very proud of. You can see our league championships, our all-scholastics. We had a virtual signing day for our seniors that went on to play at the next level. We had a virtual spring sports senior day. Try to, you know, those are the things I thought that we could control that the kids got taken away from them last spring. They didn't have the opportunity to have a signing day in front of the banner. They didn't have an opportunity to have a senior day, so we could kind of virtually give them some of those things. As you can see with the Lowell Sun and the All-Conference, you know, Michael Page was lucky enough to win the Gatorade Athlete of the Year again, many coaches of the years, New England champions, North Sectional champions. Excellent stuff. And through the winter and fall, our GPA for our athletes was 3.71, which is excellent. So I'm proud of that. Next slide, please. Our focus for athletic director focus, to coordinate and collaborate with the state, regional, and local agencies to plan and implement the 2021 athletic season in adherence with the prescribed guidelines. They put athletics forward today. We will be having four seasons. There's multiple layers to this, but we're going to play in the fall. They have taken football and cheer and moved those to a floating fall season that'll take place February through April. Lot of planning to go on with that, but we are in pretty good shape there, I believe. Continue to use the MIA as an educational resource for our student athletes. We were lucky enough to implement a Huddle All School package, which is a training and filming tool for our coaches. There's a camera that's been installed in the gym. It's a great thing for our coaches to learn, for our athletes to promote themselves and their programs. This is a good thing, so we're going to try to get that off the ground and running. Consulted, facilitated planning installation, use of the new athletic facility. Mr. Malone had to phone me today. I was on a call about a four-inch mop sink. So if you guys need to know about mop sinks, you know, three-bay sinks, we're getting versed in those things. But that project is coming along well. Good things are happening over there. And continue to work on our coaching staff to maximize our opportunities for our student athletes to the next level. So I'm proud of our athletic program, proud of what we do. This is going to be a trying season. We put out some information today for the parents of the kids. There's a lot of things going on. Work with Chris and John and Dave to, you know, make sure that we can get our kids there safely. We can get them to participate safely, practice safely. Obviously, Kelly Costantino is going to be a big resource for us as we go on and navigate these waters. So we're ready to go. It was a good year, and we look forward to starting fall athletics on September 18th. They pushed that back four days today. Thank you. Next slide towards Dave Libby, please.
Good evening, folks. Thanks for having us, Mr. Chairman and the committee. Quickly, the school business office accomplishments for the 1920 year. We finished FY20 downs versus our budget, which is a goal for us every year. We filed our ending year report, which is a very important, comprehensive document, which is standardized across the state and reports all of our spending and income was filed and audited with no findings. That's an important piece in developing our Chapter 70 reimbursement for the town. We have ongoing reorganization within our department. We're continually assessing tasks, roles, looking for opportunities for cross-training and opportunities to adapt to new technologies to streamline our operation in the business office. And that's an ongoing goal for us in accomplishment in our organization there. We also implemented a uniform pilot with our custodial maintenance staff. We changed over from a contracted service to a plan where we purchased clothing for our custodial maintenance staff, which seemed to be very successful. The staff was happy with the outcome. We plan to continue that into the future. We increased use of our financial system by onlining our purchase order system, entry and approval. And we're also rolling out this year an automated work order process where staff will be able to enter a work order. It flows through a process that goes to building-level custodians first. If they can correct the problem, they'll take care of it and mark the issue as resolved. If not, it gets elevated to our maintenance staff, who can assign our maintenance staff to try to fix the problem. And they can also, if not, if they can't fix the problem, they can elevate it to an outside contractor if necessary. So it will allow for us, us for a much better tracking system of where we are with work orders and a way to memorialize the work that gets done and document those accomplishments in a much better way. We hit some major capital improvements on projects during the 19 and 20 year. Go to the next slide. At the end of the year, afforded us an opportunity to tackle internally a lot of painting and light carpentry, light plumbing projects, things that our staff could tackle around the district that things that we can't necessarily do when students and staff are in the buildings. So we took advantage of that. We got a lot of painting and light carpentry work done around the district. We're also, this has been an ongoing project. We were able to complete two more of our vestibule projects at the Ryan School and at the Wind School. Both of these allow for entry into the building, but into a contained vestibule only, and allow for our secretarial staff at each building to sort of further vet the needs of the visitor and then determine whether we want to, we need to admit them into the building or not from that point. Both projects came out very nicely. They seem to blend right in with the building and have a feel like they've always been there, to be honest. And I'm very happy with how those two projects came out at the Ryan and the Wind. We completed overhaul of the Heathbrook Boiler Room, putting in a new furnace that heats the domestic hot water, as well as the water which heats our building. And we're showing a before and an after picture here. The old unit was all rusted out. The plumbing was failing. We had a lot of maintenance calls that we needed to do with that boiler room. And we expect those calls to decrease with the new equipment that we've installed there. We also installed a domestic hot water heater with the help of the Green Committee at the Doing School. This unit heats, again, water to be used in sinks across the school and allows us to turn off the major boiler that was, we had to operate year-round in order to have hot water in the building. That boiler can now be shut off and only needs to be turned on during heating season. So that's a big energy savings for us there. We're also installing, last year, we did one end of the track with some safety netting to allow the netting to capture stray, you know, lacrosse balls, soccer balls from going into the track area. We did one end of the field closest to the school. The other end of the field is literally in process as we speak. To get safety netting at the other end of the field to protect our athletes. We did a wind flooring project where we redid the entire first floor of the Wind School. We had some issues with moisture at the school bleeding through the existing tile work that was there. This project stripped those floors, resealed them to deal with the moisture issue in the cement and the subflooring. And we put down this new no-wax, lower-maintenance product that actually had a side benefit of being much quieter. And it will create a more quiet teaching and learning space for students in that school. The last project we undertook was adding more water bottle filling stations into the Ryan and the Wind School, five at each school. So that's a, actually a COVID-related recommendation that we try to get these in as many places as we can. So we were able to get two more schools completed with the water bottle filling stations. This is just a quick update on where we are with grants in the district. We received, you know, our typical Title I through IV grants, our special education grants that we received every year. In addition, the state and the federal government has provided some COVID-related grant monies to school districts that we'll be able to use for COVID-related expenses. So we're also able to carry over funds from FY19 and FY20 into FY21. It's usually a two-year window to spend those funds, but the state has recognized that a lot of the funds weren't able to be spent during FY20 due to COVID. And it allowed us to carry some of that money over into FY21. So that's just a brief snapshot of where we are right now with our grants. This is the time of year where I get to turn into Deb Mugford and do the Food and Nutrition Services update for you. We had a, last year, we hired an intern, which was worked out very successfully in developing a pre-K to four allergy procedure handbook. We worked on standardized rotations with our staff to get folks used to many roles that happen in our kitchens. We had a staffing reorganization where we added full-time positions at the North Street, Trahan and Heathbrook by converting some, a few part-time positions into a full-time spot. We tackled student debt in a little different way this year. We sent out collection letters via email and found it had a great response at the end of the school year. So that was one of the things we kind of had to do because of COVID, and it ended up working out fine and is probably a way we're going to go about collecting lunch debt in the future. And we had a great collaboration between the Trahan and North Street. We're starting to work to, where we're going to have a new school. With those school staffs, we've started to collaborate already and have had great success in doing that. We're concentrating on the breakfast program at the Doing and the Wind. We've increased breakfast participation by 3% at the Wind. The Doing remains sort of flat, but we'll keep working on that. And Deb is our president-elect for School Nutrition Association of Massachusetts for school year 2021. Also very proud of the work that the Food Services Department did in feeding folks during the COVID emergency. We opened up a, within days, we opened up a grab-and-go lunch service at the North Street School. Very successful. They learned a lot. They were able to streamline that operation. Served over 30,000 meals and over 250 boxed food, boxes of food that came from the federal government through these emergency feeding programs. Next slide, please. One more. And the goals for Food Services for 2021. As a team to navigate through these unprecedented times to meet the nutritional needs as well as safety needs of our students, we will be faced with uncertainty and challenges with the reopening of schools and must find flexible and effective ways to adjust and implement changes to the program together. And that's, sort of echoes the goal of the entire business office. We stand ready to support whatever learning needs to happen in our schools from a facilities standpoint, a maintenance standpoint, transportation, with our human resources and benefits and our student data folks. We're here to support the needs of the district in any way we can. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes our presentation for this evening. We certainly understand it's a great deal of information. We certainly appreciate you as the chair and the rest of the school committee members for their attention to this and certainly to the community in large. We hope you've gained some insight on our accomplishments from the 1920 school year, conceived some of our goals and objectives for the 2021 school year, and hopefully can see that we are ever preparing for operating in a COVID environment while keeping everyone safe, but providing the best education possible. So I will leave it to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Superintendent Malone. I think we have about 10 minutes, so I'm going to open it up to the vice chair. We'll start with Mr. Cutlass to see if he has any comments or questions. Can you hear now?
Can you hear now? Getting some feedback on some pieces.
Yeah, you're echoing. I can hear you. Can you hear me? Can you hear me, Mr. Malone?
Mr. Sullivan, we can hear you. I don't know if Mr. Malone can.
Okay. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Cutlass for his thoughts or any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. I just had a couple of questions. I just wanted to ask Mr. Libby on the chapter.
Having you come up as muted at this time, Mr. Chairman, so I'm not sure if there was a question piece in there.
I think it's you, Sue. The principals are able to hear. The floor is to Mr. Cutlass at this time.
Yeah. Brian or Jason, I don't know if you're able to assist us at this point.
Keith, can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Cutlass, I can hear you loud and clear.
All right.
Would like to proceed, please.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to ask Mr. Libby, if our Chapter 78 was good this year. Was it the same as last year or what he anticipated?
Mr. Libby, do you have a response to Mr. Cutlass?
Keith, can you have Mr. Cutlass ask that question again, please?
Sure. Go ahead, Mr. Cutlass.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. I just wanted to know from Mr. Libby, Mrs. Regan, if our Chapter 78 was equal to last year or what you guys anticipated it to be? And there was no reduction?
It was. It was slightly reduced, but it was equal to the amount we received last year.
Okay, so, okay, so that's good.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. And then I had a question from Mr. Pelletier. When he said that some of the kids that are more complex learners are going to go four days in person, that, how many kids? Does he have a number on that?
Hi, Mr. Cutlass. We do have a number. It's quite a large number, but we continue to look at the data. It's more than 50 students at this time.
Okay. And we have staff? We have enough staff to handle that?
So currently, at this time, we're not, we're planning for the services to move forward. It's staff availability is pending.
Okay.
For the most part, I can tell you that our related service providers and special ed teachers, particularly those who participate in the summer program, were really excited to be here, and they want to be here. And many.
That's good. Thank you, Mr. Pelletier.
You're welcome.
I just had a question. I don't know who this would go to, but about, you know, I'm all in favor of sports, about the sports. I mean, I imagine at the high school, the kids are going to sit six feet apart and wear masks in the classroom, right? And if any of them do take the bus, they're going to be one per row. And in the calf, they're going to be six feet apart. But how are they going to practice? I don't understand, you know what I mean? How's football going to line up, you know, a foot apart?
Football, football is not going to be played, Jamie, until February. So they.
Practice? Practice?
Football, they have put forward out of season coaching. So they do some out of season stuff in small groups. But they're not going to practice, they're not going to have full-blown football practice in September. No.
Okay, all right. I was wondering, yeah.
And they currently, Mr. Cutlass, do have captains-type practices going on at this time utilizing social distancing. You may see some modifications to some sports in regards to mask wearing or other pieces like that. We're awaiting some further guidance from DESE and the MIA specific to that.
All right. Okay. Thanks, Mr. Druin and Mr. Malone. Thank you. So they are taking into consideration all those things.
Yes, they are.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Then I'm all set.
Thank you, Mr. Cutlass. We'll move on to our clerk, Mrs. Demos.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, I had a couple of questions that similar, similar to Jamie that he had already asked for me. But as far as the high needs population, Mr. Pelletier, you said the numbers are pretty high. I just, that brings me back to transportation with Dave Libby as far as the van and the special ed transportation. With the social distancing regs that are in place, are we going to have the availability of transportation for these high needs populations coming back and forth?
Well, we are working with the transportation companies at this time. As we've said, Ms. Demos, pretty consistently, we know transportation is going to cost us more money than it ever has. Some of that we will utilize with the additional COVID funding we have, others, other ways we've been looking at trying to manage the budget to support that. Every element of transportation, because of the reduced numbers of students that are, that can be put on a van or a large bus, will cost us more. So you're looking at more vans, more runs, possibly additional companies contracted with. So we've also reached out to parents to try to see what their willingness to possibly drive their own students would be. We do offer our mileage reimbursement if they do take advantage of that. But there is absolutely no way getting around the fact that transportation will be costing us more, no matter if we're in a hybrid or, or in an all-in mode across the board.
Yeah, no, the, the, I, that, I completely understand that. I just wanted to make sure the capacity, you know, did we have the, the number of vans to meet the needs of these students and things if we were prepared for that? So I was having some connectivity issues at the very beginning and it may have been answered, so I apologize if it is. But when you spoke to the first 10 days with the teachers and staff back in, are we planning this virtually or in person?
I can speak to that, Ms. Demos. Well, a bit of both. Our staff are intended to be at their home school. And then the delivery of the PD will be virtual.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, depending on the school, some schools have places where the staff can sit six feet or more apart, socially distanced, masks, what have you. But we expect at the high school, for example, it may be compartmental or smaller groups within larger spaces.
Excellent. Well, I just want to take the opportunity to thank everyone that's here with us today for all the thorough and thoughtful reports that we have here and for the presentation. I truly understand what a busy time it is right now and I appreciate you taking the time to inform us of all this important decisions that are happening within the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Demos. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you. I'm going to be really brief and just offer a thank you. This is my first time doing this and, and sort of getting these updates from all the department heads and principals and just everyone that pitched in. I really appreciate the time, the effort that it took to put this together. You know, the only thing I would ask is, Brenda, I don't know if I can get a copy of the presentation so I can just sort of go through it. I may have a few questions after the fact. But thank you for all the hard work and information certainly is helpful.
That would be my pleasure, Mr. Wilson. In fact, you know, I, I really do apologize. We had to go through this presentation, really a breakneck speed. It's hard to capsulate an entire year, even though we went into remote learning in such a short period of time. But I hope you got the spirit of all the progress that we did make and all of the efforts. This administrative team is amazing and they have worked thousands of hours readying this district. So, you know, we're just so proud of the work they do and it's really hard to put into a few slides so that you can really see it all, but I hope that you felt the direction of the team and certainly the progress that our staff and students and administrators made through the year, albeit it was a difficult end of the year.
Right. I did. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. And then I have one question and then a comment. My question's for Mr. Pelletier. It's regards with to those 50 or so identified, the high need students. Have we messaged out to those families? I know I, I'm sure I'm not the only one, but my colleagues have obviously got, there's some real anxiety out there for all, for all stakeholders regarding, you know, trying to make a determination on what plan is going to be best for their family. So I'm just wondering, have we messaged, messaged out to identify those students and let them make, make them aware that, you know, the plan is four days. And I know obviously, I say it every day, we still have to negotiate with all our employee groups. But has that information been disseminated to those families?
The information will be disseminated either tomorrow or Friday. We are continuing to look at the student population because not all of the information is readily available through the electronic system that we use. So that means some families have either rejected an IEP or accepted, and we don't have that in our database. So we are looking through each student individually, looking at their IEPs and using our best professional judgment so that we don't miss any families. We know our families are going to communicate with each other and we don't want to miss a student. We suspect we will, a few anyway, but we'll deal with those individually. Going through the determination needs, there are two groups, the three to five-year-olds and then the six to 21-year-olds. The level of need also for students who have less than two hours, what comes to my mind are service-related only students, the speech and language particularly. If we followed the criteria from the department, they would not necessarily qualify technically. We're not looking at that. We're looking to bring in those students. The other issue that we're facing is, this is from an administrative lens, looking at district-wide data. The best data that we're going to get in terms of who really is eligible or who we really want to bring in for the, for the school year, for the in-person four hours a week or four hours of the service, are the teachers themselves. And our teachers are not available at this time. Still, we're working to look at the numbers. We hope to be able to message out to those families within the next day or two. The goal is for tomorrow.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then just a comment to not only everyone here, but people that are oftenly overlooked. And for those watching at home, our custodians and maintenance that have done an outstanding job since March, getting all of these projects done. I've been in a few of the schools now. When you go in, I can tell you they're immaculate. It's, I just can't thank them enough for the effort that they have continued right through since day one, even though people weren't in those buildings going in and making improvements and making them clean and making them safe. So a big shout out to all those people that have continued to do that. And like again, again, I'd like to thank the district leadership team who's also worked right through this, you know, for their thoughtful presentation. I certainly missed being in person. It's certainly one of the favorite days that I have, being on the school committee, being able to see everyone and hear the goals and the plans and how we can improve here in Tewksbury. So I would like to thank you all for that. And before I ask for a motion to adjourn, for people that are watching, we will convene at 5:15, but we will enter into executive session. And the regular school committee meeting will reconvene tonight at 6:00 PM. Thank you, Mr. Cutlass. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn the workshop. Mr. Cutlass, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. Thank you very much and we'll see you in a little bit.
Thank you.